Good evening, and welcome to the October 22, 2012 meeting of the Lake Forest zoning board of appeals. The board is here tonight to work together with all of you, property owners, neighbors, and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the zoning board of appeals, the board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The city of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners, and the larger community. At this time, I'd ask all members of the board to introduce themselves and state their ward.
Lloyd Culberson, fourth ward.
Richard Kristoff, fourth ward.
Sam Ciccarelli, third ward.
Bob Frankson, first ward.
Jay Kennedy, fourth ward.
Rosemary Care, second ward. We have before us the minutes for the August 30, 2012 meeting. Have all board members been able to review these minutes? I know I have not.
I have not.
Then we're going to move the approval of those minutes to the next meeting. At this time then, we will have the continued petition for continued consideration of a request for an amendment to the special use permit for the Knollwood Club located at 1890 Knollwood Road. The proposed changes include the addition of a fourth paddle court, modifications to an existing court, an adjacent parking area, and the addition of landscaping. The owner is the Knollwood Club and their representative is Randall W. Harper, general manager. At this time, board members, do you have any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Then it's our custom here to have all parties who might speak tonight before the board to come forward and be sworn in. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Then we're open to a presentation by the petitioner.
Thank you again very much for your time tonight in discussing the Knollwood's request for an amendment to our special use permit. As we recap from where we were at the last meeting, we appreciate your time and we appreciate the time that I spent with Kathy and the city and the staff to help us move forward with these, with this request. So if you recall, as we move forward, okay, I'll just slide over here. Here's the Knollwood Club. We are asking for a special use permit amendment to add a fourth court. We currently have three courts in our, in our location. If you look, this is our southwest corner of the clubhouse building, and behind those trees to the left are the, are the current existing paddle courts. And there they are here from behind those trees. So currently they set up to the right is our paddle hut. There's a court directly behind that hut where you can just barely see it. There's a second one right there with, in front of that car. And the third one, which is the black on the left-hand side, is the part of this proposal. We're requesting to shift that particular court back in line with those other two courts as they sit today, and add a fourth court coming this way from where that black screen is. You see those two trees in the foreground? Those are, those are the two trees in the report that we are requesting for removal to get those, to get that fourth court added. Reason for our add is, is our paddle participation has been increasing throughout the years. We have quite a few of our members participating in, in the paddle programs. But the reason for the fourth court is not necessarily to get more, more additional players there that night. It's, it's for getting us to have the players on the teams play all at the same time to expedite. Currently with the way it's set up, we have to have one team sit out throughout the matches. So a fourth court would expedite the evening play and get the full team out on the court at the time. Go ahead and continue. If you see it in the yellow, that's the aerial of the clubhouse. To the bottom-left corner of that triangle is where the paddle courts are sitting, right adjacent to Knollwood Lane. You'll see in the four, in the middle of the picture, the white, is the current parking lot and, and the parking structure between the clubhouse and those three existing courts now. Again, apologies for the site plan, but as you could see, the site plan has the three And then there's our two proposed courts. So those two are existing courts that will stay. That's the third one that was going to shift southwest. And this is our fourth court, as you could see, as you could, as we request to add a fourth court. Along this road, this is Knollwood Lane. We have setbacks, as we've talked to the city, that are appropriate from that corner to the, to the road. Right here is those, those evergreen trees that you saw in that first picture as we shot from that southeast corner of the clubhouse. As I said, it's about not increased, it's, I'm sorry, we, we, our player density with increased participation does not increase the numbers at one time. Our season is October 1st through March 31st, which is a slow time for the club. There are fewer members, there are fewer staff, and fewer activities at the, at the facility that we feel that this, this is attraction for some of our members to come to the club in the wintertime. One of your concerns from our last meeting was about parking, and you'd wish for us to study a little bit more about our parking scenarios. We've gone back as a group, had some discussion with some of our paddle captains, and what we'd like to put into place is what we have here. In that back parking lot, we have 17 spots with the new landscaping proposal, which we'll get to in just a moment, and as well as that additional court, we eliminate two court, two parking spaces. What we propose, we'll add one back in that back parking lot as, as one of the two replacements. We will also mandate two new policies. The first being that all members, guests, participants must park in the club's main parking lot, the strip parking in front of the clubhouse, or the circle also in front of the clubhouse. If you go to the next slide, you'll see down here, so back here the paddle courts, and this is that existing lot. Up in front of the clubhouse right here, we have 19 existing spaces. In the circle, we have eight spaces, so 27 spots. And then we have the main lot, which is down in this location, which we have a sidewalk, which is consistently cleared in the wintertime, as well as our roads and the circles, is always, always cleared and maintained by our staff. Therefore leaving this entire parking lot, which is adjacent to the paddle courts, for employees as well as for deliveries. Our proposal would be to communicate with the clubs that have teams that will be visiting us, the captains of each of the teams, the league itself, and each of the participants, and communicate as well as they're posting a sign at that entrance to the parking lot where no parking will be permitted to, to participants. We will request that they spend, they park in this location in front of the clubhouse. We feel that's a, that's a acceptable option for them, as well as, as I mentioned, we spoke to the, some of our paddle captains, and they agree as well that that is definitely something they can deal, they can deal with on the, on the evenings. They also mentioned that many other clubs that they visit, the parking isn't always adjacent to the courts, so they're, they're used to walking in to the, to the courts. Next slide. So as we move into the second concern that you had had and asked us to review is the landscaping. We, those two trees that I mentioned, there's one, the hair to joke that I pointed out, and the shag bark hickory. There's another tree to, to make the landscaping work as we would propose, there's a large poplar in the front of that parking lot. I was speaking with the city arborist and city staff, that they feel that that's, that's an acceptable tree to come down as well with the parking changes and modifications, the landscaping that we've, we've requested to put in place. As we've said before, we, we commit to plant the combined DBHs of each of these trees. With a new landscaping proposal, we are planting approximately 19 conifer trees. If I may call up Rick from Mariani Landscaping to help review some of the landscaping proposal that we have.
This is the entrance.
And, sorry, but would you please introduce yourself?
Absolutely, I'm so sorry. My name is Richard Grant. I'm a design director at Mariani Landscaping.
Thank you.
This is the entrance right here. Okay, so this is the parking lot. These trees are, are existing trees. There's the center of these trees. This is the.
Mr. Care, if you could speak into the microphone.
Oh, sure, so sorry. Is that better? I'm kind of tall. How's that better? This is the parking lot, right up in here is drawn. These kind of lime green trees in here are existing trees, and that's the base of these trees. These are being preserved. Nothing's happening to those, as well as these in here, and these trees in here. So those are existing trees. This is existing vegetation up and through this point that we're going to preserve. And then right at this point, you could see where I thought the most of the, the screening of this, of this court would really need to take place. This is where we're going to have black hill spruce, which is a very opaque type of spruce that can handle the shade, semi-to-medium shade in that area. So in my opinion, it's a great choice, a very long-lived plant, be there for many seasons, decades. So this is going to provide the most opacity I could give, the most screening, blocking. That's, that's a permanent feature in there. We also have three more trees wrapping this corner up and through here. So this is, this is very heavy opacity in here. These are existing concolor fir trees that you saw firstly in the slide. We're going to actually take them and get rid of this poplar, that I agree getting rid of that. It's actually a very weak wooded tree, and it's over the parking area. There's actually some concolor firs growing into it, so there's a conflict. So removing that, that large poplar in there is going to do two things. It's going to stop falling branches on this area, and then also it's going to allow this tree to have more light, and also this tree to grow up and, and beyond, because right now it's, it's hitting the poplar. Now we would, we would basically carry the same fir trees that are right up in here. There are the blue concolor firs up and through this area, up and through there.
Want to talk about the connection? Yeah. Thank you. Sure. Thank you very much. So to help address the parking movement from the two parking areas which I mentioned, in addition to the, the soft scape or the hard scape with the trees, we've decided to, currently we have a sidewalk that leads from our front circle to connecting the building. We would just make that connection to a bluestone patio that we have outside the clubhouse. And then also, we build a hardscape sidewalk right in this area too, leading from that bluestone into the parking area. This will give a connection for the members to come up the circle, stay in front of the building, stay off the street, and get right to the paddle courts. Will, and leads right through the, the large fir trees into the parking area. With the addition of these trees here, there's three parking spots in, in that location, which we are going to shift away from Knollwood Lane. That takes out that second parking spot, which, which I mentioned here. So there, there's one spot that is eliminated here, and one is here. So this one gets replaced with one right about this location, and then we lose that other one. So we feel this is a good overall landscaping package that, oh, one thing I also wanted to mention that, that provides screening that, that we're requesting, that we're requested of. Also, the new court here will have a black screen on that back edge of the paddle court, like you saw in that previous picture. So as a backdrop to those new fir trees, there's a black screen, so the, the cage, if you will, of the paddle court will be behind, will be, will be camouflaged, if you will. Lastly, we had, we talked about lighting as well, and I had mentioned that the new courts will have eight 400-watt pulse-start highlight, metal highlight light fixtures. Those, they're stadium-style light fixtures, which are more down-direct lighting on the courts. We will, we, we have committed, and we've talked about, to have the two existing courts will not be, which we're not moving or, or touching. We will change those lights to match as well, and the affected light impact of areas outside of the courts will be minimal. So as far as neighbor disturbance, we had talked about the screening with the landscaping plan and the black wind screening. The lighting would be more direct lighting system, and we spoke as, it's currently with our special use permit about the discretion about the lighting and the timing of all. And then the parking, we revise the procedures and notification. The enforcement will be done with our staff, again, communicating with the clubs, the leagues, the teams, the captains. Our captains themselves will be helpful in helping us enforce the new parking procedures, and we will be diligent about, about those as well. So we believe we've remedied all the, all the concerns that you might have. Again, appreciate your time and happy to take any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you. And now, I'm sorry, is there anyone else from the Knollwood Club who'd like to make any comments as part of the presentation?
Sure.
Okay.
Dave Rush, Lake Forest resident, Knollwood board member. I think the other part to address, and Kathy is here as the proxy tonight, is, is that we've worked very closely with Tom Bartlett, who is the neighbor that had raised some issues the last time relative to how would the sightlines work towards his vacant lot in terms of development. I, I think it's safer to say that, that this plan has been reviewed in detail with Tom as recently as last Saturday, and he is very comfortable that the plan as addressed meets, you know, it meets his requirements in terms of what he would like to see from, from the club, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, I'm happy to address anything else when you guys get to it.
Well, at this time, we would ask staff to identify any issues.
Thank you, Chairman Care. This project has really come a long way since the last meeting. It doesn't look dramatically different in the packet in front of you, but it, it really is the result of really an extraordinary amount of work. I, I think you heard that there was discussion, not, not among just the parties who attended your meeting, but the, the paddle captains were also brought into the discussion. I personally, along with our certified arborist, met on-site a number of times and spoke on the phone with Mr. Harper. And as Mr. Brush noted, we all met on-site with Mr. Bartlett as well. The plan before you does address the parking and the landscaping, and importantly, it really improves upon the existing conditions. The, the shifting back of the three parking spaces that are currently closest to Knollwood Lane is really very significant. Those spaces rest very close right now to that paved surface. Shifting them back, being able to expand the landscaped area and wrap those conifer trees around that area not only screens the parking, but screens the activity that occurs at the back of the club, the deliveries, the trash pickup. The removal of the two additional trees, I actually think our city arborist recommended the removal of the poplar and may have surprised Mr. Harper, but, but the, the poplar tree is really in declining condition and at this point does present a hazard. The black locust right now is underneath some oaks and really is beginning to inhibit the growth of some of the conifers nearby. So the, the proposal really strengthens the landscaping in that area. Moving to the other side of the curb cut alongside the new court, the discussions about landscaping that, in that area ranged quite a bit. Initially, from the city's perspective, there was a desire to see that landscaping remain in, in a more natural state. However, in direct response to Mr. Bartlett, the club has agreed to extend the conifers in that area, removing a few panels of the fence to make sure they have room to really grow and thrive in that area. So the landscaping in that area, again, is an improvement over what's there. It will be something that will give that streetscape a little sharper look, and yet it will fade back as you go further back on Knollwood Lane. It will fade back into the natural character. The response to parking really was a dramatic change. You'll remember at the last meeting, the shift in policies was to have the employees park in the main lot, and, and your question was, well, what happens if dark on a winter night, players pull up to this parking lot and it's full? It's hard to find it in the first place, and then are they really going to turn around and go somewhere else? So during the paddle season, establishing that policy that no players park there is really a very strong directive to the players. I'm confident that in my work and frequent communication with Mr. Harper, that enforcement will be effective. I have every confidence that we're going to continue our communication, and the shift in the parking policies very directly addresses the concern that in the past there has been parking along Knollwood Road. To further address that, boulders could be added if needed, and we could even take the step in working together in the future of adding a, a split rail fence if that becomes necessary. Staff does strongly support this petition. We feel that the issues have been addressed. You do have a series of conditions in your staff report. I won't go over those, but would be happy to respond to any questions. Thank you.
At this time, are there any questions or requests, requests for clarification from the board to the petitioner's or staff? And Mr. Culberson, let me start with you?
Well, I have just one question. The, you, you put up a slide that showed the policies with respect to parking on the property, but is one of those policies no parking on Knollwood Lane? Or will it be?
It will be.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and that will be presented to the members?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That's all I have for it.
I just, I just had one question. Just to the west of the new court, the fourth court, there's, it looks like, you know, the curb cut, is there, is it possible to enter from Knollwood to, into the parking lot at that point, right, just to the, yes, right there?
That will, that does need to maintain to be open, because our deliveries for a clubhouse will come and go through that area.
Okay.
And that's where the staff will, will pull in as well.
That's where they'll, okay. Thank you.
I have no questions or concerns.
Mr. Frankson?
No questions. Just one, quickly. Is the only parking issue just by the paddle courts? In other words, is plenty of space between the other two parking spaces, the parking lots?
That's correct.
It's, it's, it's just.
Correct.
I have no questions. We are now open for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a statement or ask questions? Then we would proceed to final questions or comments from the board, petitioner, or staff. Mr. Culberson?
Well, I, I would only say that I think, I think the petitioner had a good project to begin with, with a good purpose, but with these modifications and improvements, I think you have a terrific project now. And I want to thank you for working with the zoning board, staff, and your neighbors to perfect this plan, and I wish you great success with it.
Thank you.
Feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do too. You're going to have a tremendous area now that is an amazing improvement from what you have at the present moment. So I congratulate you have done everything that, that needed to be done in, in an expert way.
Thank you.
Makes sense, and thank you for working with the neighbor.
I think the landscaping, I think it's the most attractive of the project, because it makes, from what I understand, it's going to make it much more attractive from, from the outside, so. Thank you, it's good.
And I'd only comment that this time I had the opportunity to go in the daylight. So that was helpful. And I have seen the bluestone patio that you have there now, and thank you for pointing out where the absence of the poplar will lead to that walkway, and I would think it's a very nice entrance for any visitors to your club to actually enter and see the beauty of your clubhouse. So we appreciate that you listened to the comments and addressed them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, or do I hear a motion?
Madam Chairman, move to recommend approval for an amendment to the special use permit at the Knollwood Club that will allow the fourth paddle court and associated improvements specifically subject to the seven conditions outlined in staff's memo.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion is carried.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the board. Thank you, and Mr. Yack, you have a lot of time. I think that you just lost enough time.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And now we have a new petition. Consideration of a request for approval of a variance from the lot-in-depth zoning requirements to allow construction of a modified roof form at 39 South Sheridan Road. Owner Todd Buffington of 39 South Sheridan Road LLC, and representative is Stephen Bech, architect. And the first thing I'll ask is, regarding this petition, have all those parties who plan to speak been sworn in?
I have, yes.
Okay.
Todd might follow up.
Your black, I can.
Okay. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge? Thank you. Mr. Bech?
Good evening. My name is Steve Bech. I'm
the lot in depth zoning requirements to allow construction of a modified roof form at 39 South Sheridan Road. Owner Todd Buffington of 39 South Sheridan Road LLC, and representative is Stephen Bech, architect. And the first thing I'll ask is regarding this petition, have all those parties who plan to speak been sworn in?
I have yes. Todd might follow up.
Okay. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge? Thank you. Mr. Bech?
Good evening. My name is Steve Bech, I'm with Bech Design, I'm the architect on this project. We are before you today on a variance for the modification of a roof on the south portion of our project. We're going to do a second story addition and a few first story additions to the project. Currently, the existing building as it's sited on the property encroaches into the 50 yard setback on the, on a lot in depth access, which is, go to the next slide, Todd. Here is that access to the other lots. We are, 50 foot setback is right here, we encroach right there, existing. Little over 14 feet is what the existing encroachment is right now. What we want to do is, in our second floor addition, and, you know, our modifications to this area, we are changing the roof line. What we're trying to do is go with a colonial look for the, for the addition and the new design of the house. Go to the elevations. So here is our second floor addition from this end to this end. This right here, this gabled end right here, is where we're requesting the variance. We're bringing out with a gabled end, the existing roof line right now is a hip, so at the edge of the hip, we're actually increasing it by about seven feet, but we are reducing the overhang in this area by about three and a half feet. And go to the next elevation slide. You could see here, up here, how we are making that modification from a hip to this gabled end. Down here as well, and in this little zone, we're creating another gabled end. What we are doing is we're adding eight inches to the existing exterior wall to create these gabled ends on both, on both ends. These gabled ends keep in with the colonial character that we're looking to do, rather than trying to create a hip. So we're taking these hips off and sticking with the colonial character. So essentially, this is really the total amount of the area that we are requesting a variance. And our hardship, of course, is the fact that this house is built prior to 1979, this code came into, into effect in 1979, so any modifications we need to do to this area obviously would request a variance. All the other additions to the house, the second floor, the little addition off the side here, and the back additions, all fall within the current setbacks of the zoning code. So if you go to the final slide, you can give them some 3D renderings of how they look. This is, this is a current, this is the current house right now. That's what you see when you drive in, garage, the entrance is tucked back in a corner there. Right over in this area is where we would be doing our hip, our gabled end addition, taking off that hip and doing the gabled end addition. Once again, that's our rendering of the proposed, what it's going to look like. Right here is that gabled end that we're looking to do, next slide. Once again, gabled end facing south, and this gabled end facing the east. This essentially is the area that we need a variance in. And this little eight inch bump out that we're doing to create that gabled end in context with the colonial look. The last one. So this overall is our concept, right there once again. This is the area of the variance in keeping with the look of the house. You know, we've worked closely with Kathy and Megan and to come up with this design and how we progressed to get to these gabled ends, so. So here we are, and now we're requesting a variance to this.
Thank you. And now staff, would you please identify the issues?
Thank you Chairman. This request is before the Zoning Board of Appeals for really a small portion of a larger project as was described by the petitioner. The rest of the project, the partial demolition and replacement additions will be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission on Wednesday of this week. This property does fall within the historic district, and therefore that board will review the design modifications that are proposed. The portion that's before you this evening is really that change from a hip roof to a gable roof, which stemmed from the desire to maintain a consistent architectural language with the redevelopment of the house. The petitioner did explore alternatives that maintained the hip roof, that did not alter that piece at all, and really in the spirit of keeping with an architectural style, is bringing forward this request to the zoning board for that roof change. Looking at the property and the unique surroundings for this project, review of a zoning variance in this case did seem appropriate, and there are some unique hardships that were applied to this property after the structure was built and after the subdivision occurred. In particular, this lot is considered a front lot for a lot in depth subdivision, which requires a 50 foot setback from the access area to the back lots. That, that 50 foot buffer was really intended to allow for screening and some separation between the two properties. In this case, there's no significant increase to the footprint, even with the eight inch bump out, the course of brick that's being applied to the facade, there's a net decrease in the setback because of the overhang change. Staff is supportive of this project and is recommending approval based on the findings in the staff report. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Is there any public testimony? Seeing none, I ask for final questions from the board to petitioners or staff. Mr. Culberson?
Just one question of staff. If I read this correctly, the, the current setback is 31 feet. I'm sorry, yes. 31 feet, correct?
That sounds correct.
Yes, to the overhang, yes.
To the overhang?
Yes.
And with the proposed change, you'll actually be increasing the setback?
Correct.
Thirty-four and a half.
Correct. It's, the overhang is being reduced which pulls the building away.
So we're actually better off in terms of the setback with this project.
That's the current overhang that'll come off.
Very good, that's all I have.
I have no follow up to that.
I have none.
I do have a question. There is screening, landscape screening now at the private drive. Is any of that screening going to remain? You had a very nice picture there of a pretty grassy vista.
Yes, most of that will remain.
Mr. Buffington, if you could grab that microphone right by you, that would be great.
On the right, that area really won't be affected, other than the addition of a circular drive, which will be reviewed by HPC, which will kind of go around that tree to right, that tree there. So, the, there is some screening to the right of that. It may be affected slightly what's existing, but if need be, we can add some back in. It may be a little bit narrower, the screening area, but we can thicken it with, you know, some conifers or something like that.
And particularly where you have the master coming out now?
That we plan to add landscaping to that corner of the house especially, but also in front on both legs of the L. And the plan is for a red bud tree at the corner of that.
So, this, this corner, we'll have a red bud tree?
To kind of screen that corner of the house and then kind of a... Hopefully that makes it a little clearer. So that bed would be added to the current landscaping.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of, as you come along the private drive now, there is a house on Ringwood where you can see the cars are parked through whatever landscape screening is there already. So I didn't, I'm just questioning how much landscaping you'll have along that private drive. I don't know if the HPC would address that, but I would just...
This major stuff that's right here is existing and will not...
We're not planning to do anything to that?
But it'll all stay.
Okay.
So here, you see this is kind of the existing underbrush?
Right.
Will not be affected. This, well, right here, I guess is a line that may be affected slightly.
And I would just add that the landscape plan will be presented to the Historic Preservation Commission. Certainly if the zoning board has some additional concerns that they'd like to include in your discussion, we can forward those to the commission later this week.
I would simply recommend that because it is on a curve on Sheridan Road and the private drive is not clearly visible, that they just consider safety considerations in the landscape at that point, and then just some screening where it's across from the Ringwood home. Otherwise, I don't see that it would be affecting or impacting anyone further down the private drive. Are there any other comments, questions from members of the board?
I, I can't help myself. Looking at that picture right there, I just have to say, that's a remarkably creative redesign of this property, and wow, good luck.
I agree. I agree. It's a wonderful, wonderful improvement.
Would a board member care to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve a variance for a lot in depth zoning requirement to allow construction of a modified roof at 39, 39 South Sheridan Road.
I will second that motion.
And should we also add that, was the eight inches on the gable, was that included in the original on the gable and the master? That's already taken into account in the setback?
The, the, recommended approval takes into account the adjustment in the overhang.
Okay, thank you.
I'll add, subject to the conditions set forth in the staff report. And I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And other items on the agenda tonight, we have received a proposed agenda for the 2013 meetings, and I'm going to recommend that adoption of this meeting agenda be postponed till the next meeting so that all board members may have time to review it against their schedules.
Was the, can I ask a question, Madam Chairman? Was the schedule that was given to us merely not for ZBA meeting dates, but for submission dates?
Yes, it was.
The schedule was for both the, the meeting dates, which typically fall on the fourth Monday of the month. There were two weeks where there was a conflict with spring break, one conflict with Memorial Days, those have been adjusted. The schedule does also list the required submittal for the applications.
Are those still Mondays? Just different weeks?
It depends on the change. The one in May, I believe, is a Tuesday.
Okay.
I believe the one in March does maintain a Monday date. We can verify that.
And Megan, I think you, so you changed the meetings to accommodate spring break as well. I don't know...
Do you want to put it off, or you want to...
Does everyone feel prepared to vote?
Is it March 19th?
Yes.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
I'm comfortable.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'm sure. I'd move that we go ahead and get it in place tonight, move to approve the proposed 2013 ZBA meeting dates.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda provided to board members tonight for the 2013 meetings of the Zoning Board of Appeals, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The new agenda is adopted. Any additional information from staff? Seeing that board members just have enough time to get home for the kickoff for the Bears game, this meeting is adjourned.